Good morning. And I'd like to call to order the July 3rd, 2018 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Thank you all for coming out today. To wish everybody a happy 4th of July this week and wish you all the best. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Here.
Supervisor Christie?
Here.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Valadez?
Present.
Chairman Elias?
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present. Supervisor Miller is attending telephonically.
Pardon me, I couldn't hear you.
Supervisor Miller is participating telephonically.
Oh, very good. Thank you very much. And we're going to start with the invocation this morning to be offered by Antoine Holliday of Northside Church of Christ. Everybody, please rise. This will be followed by the pledge of allegiance to be offered this morning by Supervisor Valadez.
Let us pray. Eternal God of heaven that doeth all things well, we come before you this day inviting you to be a part of these proceedings on this morning. We pray heavenly father that you will be with the board as well as all those that are speaking and are participating on today, that you will guide, guard, and direct each and every one of us, that your will may be done in this county, that we as the residents may be able to live in peace and prosperity. This is our prayer. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Christie, please.
May I have a moment of personal privilege very briefly?
Yes, of course, sir.
A year ago at this time, Mount Lemon was on fire with multiple fires. It was a very bad situation. Obviously, it closed down their 4th of July parade. This year, we had a little help from Mother Nature. She gave us some rain, but we're still at a stage-two fire safety level. And this office, our office, has been working with the sheriff's auxiliary team, and we've been passing out these flyers at the base reminding people to not start barbecues or campfires or to smoke. And we stopped, we asked them to be aware of that as they go up to enjoy the cooler climbs in Mount Lemon. And I would just like to thank a number of folks who cooperated with this whole project. In addition to the Pima County staff, I want to thank Pima County Sheriff Mark Napier, the sheriff's auxiliary volunteers, the U.S. Forest Service, the Mount Lemon Fire Department, Mount Lemon Firewise, Summer Haven Business Economic Association, and the mountains' dedicated deputies, Deputies Kanto and Hayes. We've been getting reports from volunteers who every night patrol the Summer Haven area and most of Mount Lemon, and they have noticed a drastic drop in campfires and that the Forest Service has been issuing tickets. And knock on wood, we do not have a fire situation like we did last year, but we're urging everyone to exhibit caution and no campfires, no barbecues, and to remember that it's a very delicate situation up there, particularly on the 4th of July weekend. But we owe a debt of gratefulness to the service, the folks I just mentioned, and hopefully this will continue throughout the fire season and we won't see the devastating effects of the fires up at Mount Lemon. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, Mr. Christie, Supervisor Christie. Appreciate, and his comments are absolutely right on. So we do want to protect our sky islands as much as we can. So it's not just about Mount Lemon, but it's also about Madera Canyon and the Santa Rita Mountains and many roads and trails that we have up there, certainly the Rincon Mountains, Happy Valley, place where a lot of people like to go to recreate, and then our sky islands even at the lower level in the Tucson Mountains. So please be careful, please be thoughtful, and think of others and think of all the times and special places that we've shared together in those sky islands. And then you start to understand why we really need to take extra special care of them when it's so dry and nasty outside and we all walk around like pigpen from peanuts with little clouds of dust around us, you know, so. Let's keep on working on that. Pause for pause today. We have our crew from Pima Animal Care, and I'm so glad that they're here and they have a cute little puppy that I'm sure would make even the most angry person happy. So that might play a role here today, I don't know. It's hard to tell. But Kristin, please.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Morning, everyone. My name's Kristin Auerbach. I'm the Director of Pima Animal Care Center, and I bring you today two guests, this adorable puppy who you'll hear about in one second, and Michelle Figaro who's been with PAC for 15 years. We have an announcement today, which is that the iconic tent, which you may remember if you've driven down Silver Bell in the last four and a half years, has finally come down and were moved fully into the new facility. The tents, none of us were sorry to see it go, but when we counted up the number of lives it saved, we got to 25,000 dogs that are alive today in Pima County because of that tent that was put up to stop the practice of euthanasia for space and indeed has. So it's an exciting day, and Michelle's here because she's been with the county for 15 years, but also oversees our operations at PAC and has kept that tent going for the last four and a half years. So she's going to tell you a little bit about the puppy we have today.
Good morning. This is Winston. He is a four-month-old puppy terrier who will grow up to be about 10, 15 pounds. He has a little twinkle in his eye, he's excited about being here. It's his first large audience, so he's a little shaky and starstruck by our panel here.
Might be the only one.
He was, he came in to us with owner surrender. I'm sure you guys were aware of a large mass impound we had last week with 100 animals, and he was part of that. So he came in, he's been living with us and visiting all offices, but this is his first day out, so please come adopt. He's available and ready to go, and it'll be an $18 fee for his adoption.
We have an adoption special happening now, and please remember fireworks make dogs get loose, so please, please bring your pets indoors over the 4th of July.
Thank you, Kristin. And thanks for all your work out there. We really appreciate it, both of you, and everybody who works out there. Give them a nice round of applause. 25,000 dog lives saved because of that tent. That's an impressive figure, and it shows about the difficult measures that we have to go to sometimes to achieve the right thing. But thanks for hanging in there, and thanks to your staff for hanging in there. We won't call you the Tent Lady anymore, okay? We're going to have to get a new nickname for you. All right, very good. We have a call to the public now. We have a number of speakers that have signed up. I also have, at this point, six cards for the public hearing related to one of our liquor licenses, I think it's item 13. I'm very willing to obviously let you speak at the public hearing, that's fine, but if you wanted to speak, a call to the audience, let me know or let somebody up here know, and we'll let you speak then. That way maybe you don't have to wait till the item, but it's up to you. Don't want to kill your whole day but giving you that option. But certainly, that hearing will be open to the public to speak. Okay, our first speaker today is El Coca Chaluri, or something like that. That's you, I believe, sir. You're first up, so please, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate your time, and if you'd pull that microphone over towards you, it'd probably help us understand what you've got to say a little bit better. And you have three minutes, and again, thank you for spending your time here with us today, sir.
Yeah, it's not where I want to be. I've got things to do at home to improve my property without your permission or permits or taxes or fees telling me how to improve my own property. I don't have to ask you permission or any of you, which Ms. Miller was here. I brought special gifts for all your board members, but unfortunately, my First Amendment speech rights in presenting these gifts was restricted, so when you leave today, there's a jar of tar and feathers for each of you. Okay? On the eve of the birth of the celebration of our nation, I hope you all get the significance of that. Okay? This ain't a threat. This ain't none of that. This is telling you, you all are above and beyond misuse of county property, misuse of county funds, exorbitant salaries and benefits. How many of y'all know that that man right there has a man that makes $300,000 a year plus full benefits, goes to the State House and lobbies just for him and his minions to pass laws that affect all of us? Don't you think that's ridiculous? Scraping off the backs of people that can barely make it just so you can gerrymander and tyranny and treasonous, seditious rules over people? Buying buildings full of its business instead of using that money for resources for law enforcement or road repair? One of the most beautiful canyons in our county has some of the worst roads leading to it. You know what I hear from everybody that lives up there and everybody that drives up there from out of state? Jeez, why don't they do something about these roads? Nah, let's go buy buildings we don't need for our buddies and our friends. That's misuse and eureka acts of passing laws, codes, and statutes, and then levying fines and fees and taxes on top of that and using law enforcement to collect that. That's extortion, and you all are guilty and are demanding that all you step down and give up your benefits and your salaries. Ms. Bronson, I'm speaking, you should be paying attention.
Please address the members of the board, sir, not an individual person.
I am, I'm addressing the whole board, should be paying attention, not playing on her phone.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate if she pays attention. I'm a taxpayer, I have a right to be heard, not ignored, just as everybody else here does. Furthermore, you need to move your meetings to the evening. Why don't you do that? What did that smug smirk off your face? I'm not laughing or joking here. This is, you guys have violated numerous codes and laws, and you should be arrested, tried, and convicted. Our founding fathers would have taken further action than we are doing now, but believe me, I'm not playing, I'm not threatening, it's coming. And you can sit there and laugh and joke and talk behind my back, have me follow, have people go talk to my customers and make me lose business, I don't care. Keep it up, and I will make it my personal goal, whether I live on the streets or in my home, to make sure every one of you are tried and convicted for your crimes of misuse of government property, of funds, that where's all the money that you get for the refugees that are being placed in this county? You don't talk about that money, do you? Why do people in this county put up with your crimes? I have no idea. But believe me, we are that close to watching every one of you be arrested, even if it's just misuse of county funds and property. Certain people should not even be here.
If you could please finish up your comments, I'd appreciate it, sir.
This is a public forum. I pay your way to sue my taxes.
You're allowed three minutes to speak, sir, just like everyone else.
So you're limiting my First Amendment speech?
Not at all.
Yeah, telling me I can only talk for this long and only say this much? That's limiting my First Amendment.
Does other lady prefer First Amendment?
Okay, and like the gentleman said, there's others, so. I gladly receive for other people like-minded that will not report their crimes anymore.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I hope you have a great 4th of July. Our next speaker is Keith Van Heineken. Keith, come on up, and you've got three minutes, and I hope you have a great holiday week, and appreciate that you're here with us today.
My name's Roger Score, and I'll be speaking today for Keith reading his things.
You're going to read his signs for him?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Roger. Then you'll get your turn to speak, too.
Why are all these local Democrats and a couple of Republicans acting as agents of Using children as human shields is disgusting. That's what the terrorists do. 11 to 30 million illegal aliens, enemy combatants even, is an invasion. Don't make it a civil war. June 14th, 2018, Pima County's Open Borders Kill America Movement, OBCAM, leadership was in this building per the Arizona Red Star. How do Dems care about illegal alien kids when they want Americans to abort theirs with senseless glee? It's a sin that Democrats try to eliminate their own offspring. Is this nature taking care of itself? As an American, I love ICE, and as a matter of fact, so does 70% of Americans, Americans that don't speak Spanish and violate the state constitution when they say they're here. The Arizona state constitution says all official business shall be conducted in English. And every week, Board Member Elias makes sure to violate our state constitution. It's become time for Americans to have a voice. We need to stop electing those who represent other than we, the people, those who let the chamber, or those who represent the Chamber of Commerce, those who sit there and watch porn on their computer rather than listening to those of us speaking. It's ridiculous for us to spend three minutes of our day down here, we get to speak, which ties up two hours of our time during your dog and pony show. Thank you.
Just for clarity's sake, I assume that last set of comments that was not on your signs was actually spoken on your behalf, Mr. Van Heineken? Okay, just for clarity's sake, because Roger's going to get his three minutes, too.
He wrote them on the paper for me to say.
Very good. I appreciate that. Roger, it's your turn. Happy 4th of July. Thank you for being here, sir.
Happy Independence Day to America. Maybe we could take that independence and encourage those people in Mexico to overthrow that repressive, crappy socialist government they're under. Maybe instead of taking all the people out there and spreading them across our country and putting them on our bank account and we pay their medical, oh, and we pay for them to abort their kids, too. You've got to love Planned Parenthood, don't you? Cut up babies, sell the parts, pay Democrats money to get reelected to steal more of your money? And part of stealing money is at Gifford Shrine out there, well over $20 million, well over. And it's all theft of your money. I represent veterans in this state. We try to collect money for the Marana Veterans Memorial Cemetery. State don't give us money. You don't give us money. The city doesn't give us money, but you sure can give Mark Kelly and Gabby Gifford's money. You sure did give your buddies at that bowling alley a couple million. Even Steve Christie gave his friends in the golf course a big tax relief. Let them out of that, now we've got to pay for that golf course, and I'm sure we'll be giving that guy more money. But what have you done for us? What have you done to brought jobs to Pima County? You took all our road money, went and spent it on cigarettes and candy. Now you say you don't have any lunch money. Daddy, I ain't got any lunch money, I just spent all my money on marijuana. Well, Tucson ain't got a pothole problem, we got a pothead problem. We got potheads deciding what we're going to do with our money. It's time we invested that money. Why didn't you fix the roads first and then see if Chuck Huckleberry here could get five or six, seven million dollars for his bowling alley repair? Why didn't you fix our roads first and see if we'd pass a bond to fund the Giffords Shrine out there? Think we're going to come up with 20-some million for that? Why didn't you fix our roads and then decide if we're going to give American Airlines money? Boy, that must be some good porn she's watching over there. That looks really good. Talk about a bad addiction, maybe you can get her some help. I sure hope you don't pass this bond, because I know, Mr. Christie, you never stopped by the Republican Club and told any of your people there what you're doing, so I sure hope you vote against it. And Robert Medler, Tucson Chamber of Commerce, Roger, we support a lot of the bad policies of the board and the city council because...
If you could finish up your comments, sir, your three minutes have expired.
Because we're, Robert Medler, we support a lot of bad things the board and the council push, because we're here to support our paying members. They're not here for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Hope you have a good day. Our next speaker is going to be Joe Bogart. Mr. Bogart, if you'd please come forward. Thank you for being here. Appreciate your service on the bond advisory committee, and if you could give us your name for the record, please, sir. And happy 4th of July.
Thank you. I am Joe Bogart. I'm on the bond advisory committee. May I speak only for myself and hopefully some other people in the room? What I've got here is, and I'm here about the road bonds, I was the only one who voted against it, but what I've got here is a Army Corps of Engineers road longevity chart, and according to the Internet that it's, that it is considered the standard, all right? So what I'm going to demonstrate here, if you see that big, thick, black line that descends there in an arc, you, that's if you do no maintenance on a road, how long it's going to last. And it's about 14, 15 years, and then you're at failure rate, all right? In order to repair that road, and this is 2000, these figures I got off the Internet, this was 2012, okay? So it'd be higher than that now. It's going to be somewhere between $12 and $16 depending on whether it needs rehabilitation or total reconstruction, all right? Now, if we had, if the Board of Supervisors, and it is the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors to take care of our roads, and this is the main reason that I didn't vote for the bond issue, is because we have failed to maintain our roads. You'll notice these quants that are here, and this demonstrates maintenance, okay? In five years, if we had done the chip and seal and oiling and whatever's necessary, that would have extended to seven years. If it was repeated again for another seven years and another seven years, we could have extended the life of those roads to 26 years according to the department, or the Army Corps of Engineers, without any major, any major. And we could have done it at $2 a square yard versus the $16 down here. We could have done it for $2 a square yard totaling $6 over that 26-year period. You folks failed to fund it. It's your responsibility. I see so much literature on who's to blame, pointing it here, pointing it there. You are, the buck stops with you. So there was a way to fund it, whether you had to, even, I don't think you needed to have taxes, but you had the authority to fix roads, all right? But I think, you know, we did, there was a gentleman that spoke at our meeting last week, and he said, he was saying, one of the main reasons businesses have is not coming here or doing business in Tucson is the fact that the roads are inferior, all right? Now, I didn't see on that list that we needed Keno done or we needed all these other projects that are secondary, in my opinion, and I think most of the taxpayers, they need to be done also. So that's where we should be. We should be thinking about that and doing that first, not last. Doing that first, and then let's consider all the major repairs. A lot of communities are doing that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bogart. Appreciate you being here. Our next speaker is going to be John Backer. Mr. Backer, thank you for being here. Appreciate you spending your time. You have three minutes to address the board. If you'd please give your name for the record, and I hope you have a happy 4th of July.
Thank you. Chair Elias, Board of Supervisors, County Administrator. My name is John Backer. I'm a resident of Sarita and Supervisor District Four. Mr. Christie is my supervisor, and I'm here to speak against the bonds. Here we go again. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing again and expecting a different result. We could talk about two different but related subjects that smack of insanity, believing that giving the county administrator and the board majority more money can repair our roads, and secondly, thinking the county administrator and the board majority believe they can convince the voters of Pima County to pass a bond to fix our roads after one failed not that long ago. There's one common thread in the terrible road conditions in Pima County. We need to look no further than the board majority and the county administrator who's overseeing the downfall of our roads in Pima County. The road conditions are not a revenue problem, it's a spending problem. It's a problem of setting proper priorities. If the HERF and VLT funds were used to maintain roads as intended, our county roads would be in much better condition. The county administrator frequently refers to the state clawing back HERF and VLT funds for other purposes while doing exactly the same thing within Pima County. Of the 82-plus-million-dollar HERF and VLT funds that are allocated to Pima County per year, 26 million becomes part of the county's general fund, and 40 million is spent to cover the vast majority of the $43 million annual budget for the county's transportation department. The residents of Pima County don't trust the county administrator and the board majority, and you've done nothing to gain their trust. Furthermore, you don't need to be a rocket scientist or a worldview ordinance disposal technician to know that a bond to fix our roads will never pass. I recently spoke at a, before a meeting of the Sales Tax Commission where I shared the old Star Trek quote, fool me once, shame on you; fool me twice, shame on me. I went on to tell the people that Pima County had been fooled far more than twice, and this could not be allowed to continue. One of the Sales Tax Committee members approached me after the meeting, thanked me for speaking, and told me there was no way a sales tax could be used for any other purpose but repairing the roads. I responded something to the effect of, wait and see. We all know this board found a way to redirect some of that money for other purposes, which caused the approach to fail, thankfully, and it's far too common theme of this board and county administrator. Although I started out talking about how it is insanity to consider a bond to pay for roads, I would not suggest you're actually insane, but there must be some other reason that this board majority and county administrator can't see what the residents of Pima County see. The board majority and county administrator have been in their positions too long and lost touch with the residents, perhaps? Perhaps the next time Sheriff Napier visits this building to attempt to secure the raises this county has promised our sheriff's deputies, he should be accompanied by a drug-sniffing dog to eliminate one possibility. The bottom line is if you want to put another bond to pay for roads on the ballot, it will end like the last one, it will fail. The bond will further encourage residents to challenge you for your positions in the election in 2020. You might think what I've said's an act of insanity. Maybe it does. After all, I came before you again expecting you to listen and change course. Shame on me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Our next speaker is going to be Jerry Otoboni. Jerry, are you here? Oh, there you are. Happy 4th of July. Thank you for being here. You have three minutes. If you could please give us your name for the record.
And happy 4th of July to you, too, as well, all of you. Good morning, Chairman Elias and Board of Supervisors. My name is Jerry Otoboni, and I live in Oral Valley. Well, the bond that Mr. Huckleberry wants to bring before the public and pass is supposed to be very interesting since we are still paying for the 1997 bonds, and apparently just issued one in 2017, and the roads are still not fixed, only a few. All we have to do is look at the board, with the exception of Ally Miller, that had been around for almost 15 to 20 years. Wow. You all have done almost nothing to repair the roads. You spend money only on your pet projects, et cetera. Mr. Huckleberry likes riding his little bicycle, so he built a huge bike path. Spending money on bonds for repairing roads is like buying groceries on a credit card. Even when you have finished with the food, you still have to pay for it. Mr. Huckleberry said the roads would last about 20 years, but it would last, it requires maintenance property every, and chipping every two years, that you members except for Ally Miller didn't do for the last 15 to 20 years. And we are to trust you guys? Are you kidding? You are kidding, right? Okay, so excuse me, look at your bad history. Then there's the HERF funds, that's the gas funds and the license fees, which is supposed to go to repairing the roads. I think we're getting... We, I think we're getting ninety-one million today or this year. This city's Marana, wonderful Marana, saw Sarita, Ora Valley, use their money, almost all of it, to fix the roads. But you, for some reason, use only approximately ten percent and spend the rest of your money on some, on old bonds and weird little things like fixing an old bowling alley. And I wonder why you're fixing some guy's old bowling alley? Well, anyway, you've lost us trust and happy Fourth of July. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Jerry. Our next speaker is going to be Albert Lannan. Mr. Lannan, please come forward and give us your name for the record and you have three minutes to speak, sir.
Albert Lannan from Picture Rocks. On December nineteenth, twenty seventeen, a hydrogen balloon exploded at the Worldview Spaceport built by Pima County taxpayers at a cost of twenty million dollars. On December twenty-second, Star columnist Tim Stellar reported that Worldview officials told him that final results, recommendations and corrective actions would be available in about forty-five days. That would have been mid-February. On February eighth, County Administrator Huckleberry sent the Board a memo describing the damage as superficial, even though windows and ceiling tiles a mile away were broken. He announced that Worldview had commissioned an independent investigation led by NASA retiree Wayne, Wayne Hale, stating that the county would be a participant to verify the independence of the investigation. His assistant, John Voorhees, would represent the county. Knowledgeable observers reviewed damage reports and photos and said that the damage was more than superficial. On June thirteenth, I attempted to contact Wayne Hale, Worldview and John Voorhees for updates. Hale's assistant refused comment as to whether the report was even done, saying, I have no clue where it's at. Worldview did not respond to three emails. Voorhees reached by phone on June fifteenth, told us the investigation has been concluded, that a draft report, um, had been completed, that the county was reviewing the draft. He called it a slow-moving ballgame, that the county, as landlords, we have to be deliberate and careful. He said the report would be given to elected officials in another month or so after review and then it would become a public document. That is a substantially different process than that set out in the County Administrator's February eighth memo, in which he said the report would be, quote, "made available to Pima County for our information and comment." The process as it is unfolding looks like a draft was sent to the county as long as four months ago. Revisions were proposed and there was a continuing back and forth, a slow-moving ballgame, to secretly revise the document and negotiations of the content to make everyone look good. That smacks of cover-up, not invest, independent investigation, of the public being kept in the dark, of this Board of Supervisors being deliberately sidelined. It's worth remembering that it was not the break-in at Watergate that forced the President out of office and his minions into prison, it was the cover-up. That the Board has been kept out of the loop is indefensible. It is worth remembering that the County Administrator needs to immediately provide you the original draft report along with the report as it stands now and any revisions made in between. A public comparison should be made. If there are significant differences beyond information and comment, then this Board must ask, act. If there are no differences and the delay in secrecy are somehow bureaucratic inertia, I will appear before you again to apologize, but we'll need to see the documents first. The late John Honeycutt, founder of the Arizona Daily Independent, had as his credo, "The truth is neither liberal nor conservative, it is the truth. Truth is all we ask for today."
Thank you, Albert. Okay. Our next speaker is going to be Mia Tittle. Mia, if you'd give us your name and, uh, for the record, and thank you for being here and help, we have a, I hope you have a happy Fourth of July. Excuse me.
Thank you. It's Mia Tittle. I was hoping Supervisor Miller would be here today. This pertains to her as well, or to her vote. Human trafficking is a serious problem and we should all be driven to stop it. In our efforts to stop crime, however, we should first make sure that our policies don't adversely affect those who are innocent of what we're trying to prevent. We could catch a lot more criminals if we didn't have a policy of innocent until proven guilty. But our justice system is set up so that there should be a lot more guilty people wrongly going free than innocent people who are wrongly convicted. It's estimated that fourteen thousand five hundred kids are trafficked in the U.S. per year. Compare that to hundreds of thousands of illegal minors being brought in for purposes of obtaining a better life. Hundreds of thousands of minors who would be seriously and permanently adversely affected but by being removed from their parents. So because some people are human traffickers, should we endorse a policy that results in throwing everyone in jail and taking their kids away? That would be overly harsh punishment on a population that's largely innocent of that crime. This is where human rights comes in. I'm not saying that we're obligated to take on immigrants or to have open borders, but that we afford basic human rights, unalienable rights, that are endowed not by our citizenship but by our Creator. The right for children to remain intact with their parents is pretty high on that list. It should be hard for anyone to take someone's kids away, whether citizens or not. Yes, illegal immigrants are breaking the law, but we have a concept of retributive justice in this country that the punishment should fit the crime. Some countries would shoot you for crossing the border. It's a great deterrent, but does the punishment fit the crime? Does the punishment of having your kids taken away some permanently fit the crime of trespassing on American soil? Even felons have a chance to get their kids back. And to put this into perspective, have you ever broken the law? Have you ever gotten a speeding ticket? Did you go to jail? Most people who do speed do so to get someplace faster, endangering the lives of others. Most people who cross the border do so for a better life, which brings us to the next point of mitigating factors, basically breaking the law for a good reason. Let me ask you a question. Would you steal a loaf of bread for yourselves or for your children if you had nothing to eat? And would that be the same as robbing a bank? Of course, illegal immigration is a federal offense, but there's the mitigating factor that most people breaking the law are not doing so for violent or criminal reasons. The difference between criminal law and immigration law is that you have, as lawmakers, can factor lenience, consider mitigating factors and factor leniency into your laws, which shows you don't view the world as black and, and white. Zero tolerance policy is atrocious, so thank you to the supervisors who have voted against it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is John Schwartz. Mr. Schwartz, if you'd come forward, please, and give us your name for the record. Thank you for spending your time here with us today and hope you have a nice holiday week with the Fourth of July, sir.
And to you as well. Uh, my name is John Schwartz. I was here two weeks ago during the debate on a resolution when a few people in the audience started making noise and shouting out while one of the Board members was speaking. The Board member had listened to all of us very courteously, yet I too found myself shouting out at one point. I'm a very respectful person. I listen to what others say and I'm often influenced by others. So I was totally surprised when even I began yelling out. Afterwards, I thought about it. Why did people yell out? Why did I join them? And here's what I concluded. I realized that the reaction of the audience came about because despite having listened courteously, the supervisor who was talking was not actually being either respectful or civil. Being respectful and civil, in my view, involves more than listening and being courteous. It involves endeavoring to find and speak the truth. Telling falsehoods is not respectful. It is not civil. And that's what happened, I believe. Despite having listened courteously, when speaking, the supervisor was also relaying a series of falsehoods to the point that the audience was no longer willing to remain silent. This was true from the very first claim the supervisor made, something to the effect that the Democrats have been standing in the way of a solution to the immigration issues that they haven't compromised. Saying that Democrats haven't compromised on immigration is flat-out false. The Senate has twice adopted bipartisan comprehensive immigration bills with both Republican and Democratic support that a majority of Republicans in the House have refused to consider. Having failed, Democrat and Republican leaders in the Senate then came to an agreement with Trump on a comprehensive plan, announced it, and then, to everyone's surprise, Trump rejected it. Every citizen has a responsibility to endeavor to find and speak the truth, but it's especially crucial that elected officials treat others in that manner. They're not just role models for all the rest of us, they're also making rules by which we all must live. Uttering a great many falsehoods and irrelevancies, one after another, the supervisor who caused the outcries in the audience was not endeavoring to find and speak the truth. That was neither civil nor respectful to the audience. It felt insulting. I emphasize that nothing excuses the audience's response nor my own. Nothing comes close, but it does make our responses understandable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Good comments. Our next speaker is going to be Brenda Wexler. Ms. Wexler, thank you for being here.
I'll get my folks together.
Yeah, I know, sometimes it's hard to when you sit in the middle of the row there. Um, please give us your name for the record. You have three minutes and, uh, thank you for spending your time with us here today and have a happy Fourth of July, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Brenda Wexler and I just want to tell you this little story. Friday, last Friday, I was riding down an elevator in Washington, D.C. at the J.W. Marriott Hotel and I, there was this woman riding down with me, this woman in this blue suit, who was telling me how exhilarating and exhilarated she was feeling. She had just come back from the East Room of the White House with the President. She's a banker and I asked her why she was so happy and she said that the President was giving them what they wanted, stuff. And I didn't ask what the stuff was. I said, what about the kids? What about the families? What, what about what's going on now? And this is what she did. She closed her ears and she said, "We're here to get our stuff and that's why I'm happy." And so I have a question for you guys. And so she made this Faustian bargain. And I think you should explain what that is to your children. And so I'm asking you, what are you willing to trade for those Stone Garden funds? Are you willing to take and do the Fed's bidding? Are you willing to take dirty money to do a really dirty job? That's really what it comes down to. You know you don't have to do this. So you're going to be telling your kids in the future what you did. And I brought one of those little Mylar covers with me and I was thinking, you can use this. If you, you can use this. Tell your kids what it, grandkids, what it feels like to sleep on this comfortable little Mylar blanket. So I'm asking you to be able to tell your kids a good bedtime story, a story about how you stood up and did the right thing for the people in Pima County. I'm asking you to be courageous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to have a, thank you, thank you. Oh, good comments. Um, we're going to take a moment here while we try and reconnect Supervisor Miller. Apparently, um, that phone call was, was cut off somehow. I don't know. Maybe it was DHS or something. No, I'm just kidding. You never know. But it makes a little bit of noise sometimes, so we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on, on call to the audience for just a moment while we, uh, get Ally connected to us all again. Sorry for the delay. You want to try once more or should we go on with the meeting?
Hello? Hello?
Hello, Supervisor Miller. We're just trying to get you back here online at the Board meeting.
Right. Okay. Um, I did want to, um, let folks know that I am listening and I am on the line, so I am hearing their comments.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Our next speaker is going to be Tamara Barick. Tamara, thank you so much for being here today and spending your time with us and, um, happy Fourth of July. And you have three minutes. If you would please give us your name for the record.
My name is Tamara Barick. I'm a rescuer and animal welfare here in the community for over sixteen years. Uh, PAC Foster volunteer at PAC as well as on the PAC Act Committee. I came today because I would like to read excerpts from the Chair's letter to Mr. Huckleberry and the Board regarding the accomplishments of PAC this year. The two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen fiscal year has been a highly successful year for the Pima Animal Care Center, PAC. The Pima Animal Care Center is on a positive foundation and the staff, community partners and volunteers are eager and optimistic as they approach the future. Objectively measured, the past year has been a record, record-breaking year of positive outcomes of PAC. Key accomplishments are summarized as follows. The live outcome rate over the past twelve months has been nearly ninety percent, the highest ever. From June first, two thousand seventeen to May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, PAC adopted out eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight animals. Returned one thousand nine hundred and thirty-three lost pets to their owners and sent two thousand one hundred and twenty-five to rescue groups and placed three thousand two hundred and fifty-one pets in foster homes, reducing overall continuous inventory of animals housed in the shelter over the course of the year. Notably, even while contending with the disruption caused by construction, the shelter remained open and operated, only closing to the public for one day. These outcomes support work in many other areas for the benefit of Pima County, the city of Tucson, the town of Ora Valley and the city of South Tucson. In our bullets, approximately thirteen hundred dedicated volunteers contributed an average of eighty-five thou, eight, eighty-five hundred hours of service every month. That equals thirty-eight full-time employees. They've changed our approach to meet the needs of our community customers by responding to the requests for assistance, advice and support regarding pet-related issues through our Pet Support Center. They average eight thousand calls a month. A pet support network program's been initiated to build partnerships with local agencies and to provide support and services in underserved areas, including free vaccines, microchips, leashes, collars, fence building and repair support with dog houses, foods and supplies. This year's accomplishments are truly noteworthy in face of the many other challenges not always so common to other types of endeavors outside of the animal sheltering. Ongoing construction, the removal of the wonderful tent- Ongoing construction, the removal of the wonderful tent, disease outbreaks and containment, perpetual efforts to improve operations, communications, and internal/external collaboration. The above efforts speak for themselves and should be maintained and improved. We would like to thank PAC staff, community, volunteers, and partners for their work and extraordinary contributions. Specifically, we would like to acknowledge Director Kristen Arbach, Deputy Director Sarah Aguilar, Operations Managers, Michelle Figueroa, and Esteban Rodriguez, the Operations Manager. I have to say that I've worked here for a long time. I've gone from the years that PAC was killing for space, for better terminology, and to walk into that building every day now as a volunteer. I'm so excited to be there. Thank you, and you all have a happy Fourth of July.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Our next speaker is going to be Sally Withers. Ms. Withers, thank you for being here with us, and appreciate your patience. If you could give us your name for the record, three minutes, and have a happy Fourth of July.
Thank you very much. My name is Sally Withers. I appreciate being here right before the Fourth of July. It's a great way to celebrate it, to be able to come in and speak with you. I'm here just on my own, on behalf of being a mother, a grandmother, and a preschool kindergarten teacher since 1986 here in town. I think it goes without saying that the detention of young children being separated from their parents is such a despicable policy that I can't understand how anyone could defend it. So I'm going to instead ask that the Board of Supervisors please act on two fronts. Following the District Court order to make it mandatory to return the children as soon as possible, knowing that there are children here, right over here on Oracle Road, being detained, I know and acknowledging that the Board of Supervisors, the Mayor, and the City Council have no jurisdiction and cannot affect the actual change of policy directly. Understanding that, I ask that you please, as other local governments have around the country, stand up and not only condemn the policy, but act as unofficial, if you will, stewards of those children that are being held here in Tucson, that if they're in our city, they're in our jurisdiction as citizens, and as parents, and as grandparents, and as government officials, that we -- that you take, please, a concerted effort to go on record that we want to have accountability from the federal government in terms of regarding the return of each and every child that's being held in Tucson, especially for those whose parents may have been already deported, because it makes it very, very difficult for them to get them back. As a parent, as a grandparent, I appeal to you, please, to understand how vile this policy is, and how much it's not only cruel, but it's inflicting lifelong damage on these children who have done nothing, who have done nothing to deserve this. Also, knowing that the federal government is now trying to petition to have lengthy detentions of families, meaning that the children would be detained for an undetermined amount of time, knowing how much damage this inflicts on the children. And not only that, it costs a huge amount of taxpayer dollars to do this. It's cost-effective, it's just a ridiculous policy. From a moral point of view, it's a despicable policy. I ask that, in the face of the federal government asking for this, please go on record to say that we do not want our city to detain children for extended periods of time, that we do not want Davis-Monthan to ever be used for that purpose, and that we will do all in our power to be stewards for these kids and get them back to their parents, that we want a full accounting. If we can't have their names, that we have them by number, and that you'd ask--
Could you please finish up, ma'am? You've spent your three minutes.
This is the last sentence.
Thank you.
And that we want to have accountability to know when each and every one of those children has been returned to their parents. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your words. Our next speaker is going to be Steve Diamond. Steve, if you'd please come up. Thank you for being here, and three minutes. You give us your name for the record, and hope you have a great Fourth of July.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Same to you and to all of you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Diamond. Regarding Item 2 on the addendum, I understand that the Board will be meeting with Mr. Flag in executive session for legal advice and direction about the respective authority of the Board and of the Sheriff regarding the operation of the Pima County Jail. As you well know, this issue bears directly on whether or not the Board has the authority to remove ICE from the county jail. I know you've seen Mr. Peard's carefully researched memo on this point, where he asserts that the Board does indeed have that authority. Now rumor has it that Mr. Flag disagrees. We shouldn't be surprised when lawyers disagree, but the community should be interested and concerned when we find them disagreeing on an issue of such import. Here in this chamber today and on other occasions, you've heard passionate pleas to remove ICE from the county jail, to end other forms of collaboration between the Sheriff's Department and federal immigration authorities, and to divest from business dealings with companies that contract with those federal agencies. Considering how vital these issues are to your constituents, to this community, and how intertwined they are with each other, I urge the Board to make all relevant deliberations as transparent and as public as possible. I urge you, after hearing what Mr. Flag has to say and before you decide how to proceed, to hold a public hearing where Mr. Flag and Mr. Peard both appear, where you supervisors can question them both and allow them to present their respective points of view to you and to the public. This community wants ICE out of the county jail. This community wants Operation Stone Garden to end. And this community wants no county resources used to enforce federal immigration policies. Find ways, find ways to accomplish these ends. Be creative, be bold. Don't hide behind one lawyer's cautious opinion about what you can't do. The times require boldness of us all. Be bold. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Appreciate you coming here and spending your time. Our next speaker is Gabriela Casares Kelly. Thank you for being here with us today. Certainly appreciate that. You have three minutes to speak. If you'd please give us your name for the record, and hope you have a good holiday week with the Fourth of July and all of that, you know?
Thank you.
But be careful with them fireworks.
Thank you. My name is Gabriela Casares Kelly. I'm a member of the Tanahtam Nation. I do reside in Ally Miller's district, District 1, and I work in Sharon Bronson's District 3. So I want to bring up two very different issues today. Number one is that I'm working in a community that is already militarized, and we are constantly struggling with the militarization of our community. Just a few weeks ago, three weeks ago, one of our members, a tribal member, was intentionally struck by a Border Patrol vehicle, and that Border Patrol vehicle did not stop and continue to drive away. More regard would be shown to a dog. That is the type of treatment that the indigenous people of this community are experiencing. We often experience abuses by Border Patrol agents, harassment, questioning, violation of my civil rights, almost on a daily basis. It's gotten to the point where we don't even know whether or not to report anything because it goes into a void and nothing, no data is collected, nothing. We might get a form letter response as to what happens. This is part of an overall systemic issue. ICE, Border Patrol, all of that is all tied in together, especially we're hearing a lot of this racist rhetoric throughout the country, but it affects our community, and it is not acceptable. And this is happening here in Pima County. That being said, the other thing, it's a very -- it's related and at the same time not, I wanted to specifically thank Pima County Public Library Systems. We are the size of Connecticut without the roadways on the Tanahtam Nation, and we do not have a Pima County public library. I know that the budget test just closed for this year, but we need to look for it in the future. We have just recently gotten them to come out and provide a bookmobile in our community one time a month, which is tremendous. It's wonderful, and we're having an amazing response from the community. But when we're talking about education, we're talking about systemic violence and militarization and all of those things that go along with oppression, we're not providing resources within our community for uplifting at all. So thank you for your time. Those are the issues that I want to bring up today.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out. Ryan Kelly is our next speaker. Mr. Kelly, if you'd come forward, please, give us your name for the record. You have three minutes, and as always, we appreciate you being here, and happy Fourth of July.
Good morning, Supervisors, and thanks. I'd imagine by now that upon my approach to use these three minutes that you have an idea of the tune I'm likely to sing, and I don't mean to sound like a broken record. I wish that I could play a different song every time. But two weeks ago, I implored you all to take action beyond the strongly worded resolution, which, to be clear, was appreciated, no mistake. I mentioned our finger wagging when it came to family separation, but I want to emphasize that we cannot define ourselves through negation. We must define ourselves through affirmation. And what does that mean? We know where we are. In the last month, as my wife Gabriela just spoke to, right here at home in Pima County, a tribal member of the Tanahtam Nation was the victim, struck on foot on his own land by a Border Patrol agent in his vehicle, and left on the ground with no concern or acknowledgement of his humanity. That was the second person struck in the Tucson sector intentionally during that same time. Jose Elena Rodriguez, dead at 16 for throwing rocks in Ogallis. Claudia Gomez Gonzalez, murdered in Texas by Border Patrol. Raul Rigetta, who I just learned about yesterday morning, shot 30 times by local police in collaboration with Border Patrol in San Diego County. His dead body left in cuffs on the roadside for 12 hours after his murder. What will we do? Say it's wrong and accept grants and policies to collaborate with systemic injustice? No, no. Kick ICE out of our jail. Stop approving contracts with companies that work with ICE and DHS. Reject Stone Garden. Easy, do it, do it, do it, do it. Those are all policies. We're talking about family separation. Those are all policies and practices of family separation, and they've been going on in this county for years. If we don't push for the ideals that are just and protect all the people of our community, we will never see the Pima County we all deserve. Act, act, act. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Will Goble. Will, thank you again for being here today, and as you make your way up here, I'd ask you to give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak, and you know the routine. I know we've seen you before, and I hope you have a good holiday week with the Fourth of July and all that, okay?
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Will Goble, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Free the Children Coalition. So as you've heard testimony today, we've been in a time of crisis. For the past four to six weeks, we've seen images on the news and sustained coverage of the practice of child separation here in our county that's still taking place as thousands of children have yet to be reunited with their parents. So at the last board meeting, the Board passed a non-binding resolution criticizing the policy of family separation on our border. And this policy of family separation was initiated by the federal government as a supplement to the policy of zero tolerance, as I'm sure we're all aware. But that sustained practice of family separation on our border is not the work of the federal government, or the Department of Homeland Security, or ICE, or CBP alone. In fact, it is a result of collaboration between a larger network of federal agencies, non-governmental organizations, and for-profit corporations. The federal government, through ICE and CBP contracts, routinely contracts private entities to aid in the systematic deportation of tens of thousands of people across the United States annually. These profit-minded businesses form the structure of a reinforcing dynamic wherein money is funneled through lucrative government contracts to finance surveillance equipment, license plate readers, detainment facilities, transportation services, and administrative costs, which all result to profiting off of the immeasurable suffering of these people. So not only do these companies, like Thomson Reuters, Westlaw, G4S USA, Vigilant Solutions, contract with the federal government, they contract with Pima County and our local government as well. Money from our local taxpayers is routinely handed out to these companies that have been collaborating with ICE and CBP in the practice of family separation in recent months, regardless of alternative companies that exist to provide these services. Symbolic actions taken against the practice of family separation in the form of this non-binding resolution is a first step, and we appreciate that. But our local government must also take practical steps to dismantle this infrastructure deployed by ICE and CBP resulting in irreparable harm to these children. We must hold our county to a higher standard if we are truly in opposition to this practice, and that's why I'm here on behalf of the Free the Children Coalition officially calling for the local government via the Board of Supervisors to sever all contracts with these for-profit corporations. Divestment has the potential to pressure these corporations from ceasing collaboration with ICE and CBP, and we hope that this sends a message that Pima County will not cooperate with these businesses that are actively participating in the separation of families. Two, that our local government is committed to ensuring that all people are treated with the respect and dignity that they deserve, regardless of their citizenship or origin, and finally, that these private companies will not receive any future taxpayer money insofar as they continue to do business with ICE or CBP. In closing, I have an official request signed to all members of the Board of Supervisors today with a signed copy for Attorney Andrew Flag, combined with a public records request so that we can get more transparency on these contracts with these businesses profiting off of the practice of family separation. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Our next speaker is going to be Kristin Randall. Kristin, thank you for being here. I know it's been a long week, so appreciate you spending your time here with us. If you could give your name for the record in three minutes, and then I hope you have a good Fourth of July.
Thank you.
But don't eat too much watermelon.
I'll try. My name is Kristin Randall, and I wanted to first start by talking about the five deaths at Capital Gazette last week. They were committed by a man who has a history of stalking and harassment, and a grudge against a newspaper, and an obsession with a woman. This is very scary to me because it sounds a lot like my story. I've been stalked and harassed by a man for three years, and this man started stalking and harassing other women in my town. When we finally identified him, we hoped he would stop. We had-- women in, in my town. When we finally identified him, we hoped he would stop. We had two sheriffs go and speak with him and ask him to stop. And for a while it did. That didn't last and eventually it kind of blew up and escalated and he started posting people's personal addresses in public places for no other reason than to tell us that he knew where we lived. I went to go get an injunction against harassment to add some, I know it's just a piece of paper, but to add some level of protection for me and my family against this man. And eventually, six other people in Aravaca went and got the same thing. So there were seven women who sought injunctions against harassment against this man. We then found out that each injunction would cost $100 to be served to this man. And at that time, five of the seven women said that if they had known it was going to cost them $100, they would not have, have gotten it. I don't feel that this fee is malicious on the part of the county or even intentional. I feel like it's, it's just an oversight and I wanted to bring it to your attention. This disproportionately affects poor rural residents in some of these pockets in the far corners of Pima County where the police presence is already pretty scarce. And it reduces reporting of these dangerous people. It also perpetuates the belief that stalking is not a serious crime. So I'm asking the board to consider eliminating this fee and to also consider other options for dealing with stalkers in our county. I would just like to add that Supervisor Bronson has been an amazing partner through all of this. She's been aware of this stalking situation since it first began and she's been working really hard for us and for the people of Aravaca. So, thank you Supervisor.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next speaker is going to be John Irvin. John, if you'd please come forward, give us your name for the record and you have three minutes to speak and I hope you have a happy 4th of July, sir.
Thank you, sir. You too. My name's John Irvin. This is my second meeting here. I came last time and decided to watch and pay attention and shut up and listen. And today I've decided I've got some things to say. At the last meeting, I found it rather upsetting that everybody seemed to respect one another and let everybody talk, but when Supervisor Miller started to talk, you allowed people to yell liar at her and, and things like that. I found that very disrespectful. I don't believe if people had been saying that to yourself, Mr. Elias, that you would have let that continue, but you decided to allow it to continue. I felt that to be rather odd. Also, last time, they talked about the separation of children and parents. As a former marijuana smuggler on the border, I used to, I'm no friend of Customs or Border Patrol. If I had run across the border with 200 pounds of marijuana in my truck and my five-year-old daughter had been caught, they certainly would have let my daughter come to jail with me. She'd have been turned over to CPS and I certainly wouldn't have been given a meeting to come back to, to discuss my situation. I would have been put in jail. I think this separation with children is a bad thing. I don't believe they should be separated from their parents. I think they all ought to be put on a bus and sent back. But that's just my feeling. You know, I know that they wouldn't have sent my daughter to prison with me. Also, last meeting, I noticed that Supervisor Miller talked about trying to save some money from your budget and you all discussed the fact, well, I think it was you, Mr. Elias, that told her it was inappropriate time to be bringing this up, that she should have brought it up at an earlier time. But when, isn't it always a good time to try to save the county money? I mean, you know, like it does, that doesn't make any sense to me. And, you know, it also doesn't make sense to me that we've got Mr. Huckleberry as the second highest-paid city administrator in the country or county administrator. I don't understand that. Higher paid than Houston, Dallas, Phoenix? Why don't you give some of the money back to the county so they can fix our roads? And then, I also think in high school, the kids aren't allowed to have phones during class. Some of you are sitting up here looking at your phones instead of listening to the people talking to you. I find that very disrespectful. But maybe you're studying driving lessons. You know, I know that if I had driven through that wash and with the sign up that said, "Don't enter," I'd no doubt would have been charged with a stupid motorist charge, but apparently county supervisors are not done there. And pretty much that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is going to be Janie Simmer. Janie, thank you for being here today. It's always a pleasure to see you out in the audience. If you could give us your name for the record, you have three minutes to speak and I hope you have a good holiday this week.
You too. Thank you. I'm Janie Simner and I was sorry to miss last, the last meeting. I missed it because I was taking my daughter to the dentist. And I was running late to that appointment, so as, as one does, I reminded myself not to rush and that it would be better to be five minutes late for the dentist than to get a speeding ticket, which would delay me a lot more. But as I sat in the waiting room once I got there, because it turned out the dentist was behind schedule anyway, so those five minutes didn't even matter, I got to thinking, if I had broken the speed limit and gotten caught, the worst that probably would have happened would have been that I would have gotten a ticket, I would have gone to traffic school, and my child would have reminded me of this for pretty much the rest of my life. But what if it had been a different mom who had been pulled over, caught speeding on the way to the dentist with her child? What if it had been a mom who came to the United States without papers as a child when her parents were desperate for work? Or a mom who had more recently fled violence in her home? Would driving too fast just end with a ticket for her? Or even as a police officer, you know, county or city finished writing that ticket, would ICE conveniently show up courtesy of the Sheriff's Department use of Stonegarden funds to detain her indefinitely and take her child away? The same traffic stop that would be a mild irritation for me could be life-shattering for someone else by simple accident of when and where and into what circumstances each of us was born. Now, we don't know whether or not this sort of thing has actually happened because we still don't have full documentation on how Stonegarden funds are being used. And in light of all that's been going on the past few weeks, I think getting that documentation becomes all the more critical. Now that we know how ICE treats families who fall into their custody, we really need to know how that collaboration between the Sheriff's Department and Stonegarden is operating in practice. And when we get that information, if we get that information, I just urge everyone on the board to pay special attention to how our use of Stonegarden funds might be affecting families and children and whether the county is still comfortable being a party to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janie. Very good. That concludes call to the audience today and I thank you all for coming and participating. We have one change to today's agenda. That's on page three, item 10, Community Development and Neighborhood Conservation. The correction, the contract amount is incorrectly listed as revenue and so funding source is added, so it should read International Sonoran Desert Alliance, HUD, Neighborhood Stabilization Program, NSP One Fund, Contract Amount $100,000. So, we're hearing no objections. We'll consider the agenda changed in that manner. We have one presentation. That's item one on the addendum. Chair will move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Supervisor Christie, if you would please take care of this and I'd ask Faith Boyce, Ray Patroni, Harry Alexander, please come forward. And I don't know if you have anybody else with you, please bring them forward too. You're welcome.
This is indeed an honor for me to present this proclamation. It's part of where my district is and it has a great history. And Faith, while I give the proclamation, would you please hold that? Whereas the Empire Ranch is part of the Los Yenegas National Conservation Area, a key component of the Pima County Sonoran Desert Conservation Plan, and whereas Pima County supports the preservation of its cattle ranching heritage and culture and the role that cowboys and cattle played as one of the five Cs of Arizona, and whereas the Empire Ranch Foundation serves to protect, restore, and sustain the Empire Ranch historical buildings and landscape as an outstanding Western Heritage and Education Center, and whereas the Empire Ranch Foundation is hosting the National Day of the Cowboy at Empire Ranch on July 28th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and whereas the National Day of the Cowboy Celebration will include a tribute to Walter L. Vale, founder and partner of Empire Ranch, who was recently inducted into the National Cowboy Hall of Fame and served as a member of the Pima County Board of Supervisors in 1884. And it should be noted, Mr. Huckleberry completed his first year as administrator that year and was an intimate friend of Supervisor Vale. Supervisor Vale, who that same year, 1884, also founded and served as the first president of the Arizona Stock Growers Association. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Saturday, July 28th, 2018, to be Empire Ranch, Walter L. Vale, and Arizona Cowboy Heritage Day. And we encourage all citizens to attend the celebration at the Empire Ranch, or if they can't attend, to support the Empire Ranch Foundation and all of its good works passed and adopted this third day of July 2018. Congratulations.
Wonderful. Boy, what an honor. This is amazing. So the Empire Ranch Foundation was established in 1997 to protect and sustain the buildings that are there. And being recognized by our county is, is priceless. Steve came out a year ago and we gave him a tour by my dad, who was born and raised on the ranch. And we are just honored. I can't say anymore about being here today and being recognized. So thank you to the board for everything today.
I have a quick question of you. When you gave him the tour, did he get up on a horse?
Not this time, but, but we do have a trail ride and we keep threatening that, that we're going to make sure that he goes out on that. We ask every single year. So maybe this is the year. I mean, it could happen. Right. So we do have a trail ride event, which is in April, the first weekend. It's obviously passed this year, but yeah, we can get him on a horse. I know people, so.
I tell you what, I will go on that trail ride and I will get on a horse down there for that event. You bet. And thank you for the invitation. Anybody else like to say a few words?
My name's Harry Alexander. I'm a board member with the Empire Ranch Foundation and I'd like to just pass along that my good friend, the late Amel Franzey, would really have been super hyped about this particular situation. He would have also been super hyped about the Pima Animal Care Center situation because he worked very hard for those. These were his two babies, Pac and the Empire Ranch. And thank you, Boards of Supervisors. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Anybody else?
Do it. Thank you.
Let's give them one more round of applause for the Empire Ranch Foundation. Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait.
Well, I wish you all well. That's great. You know, the Elias family has quite the ranching reputation as well. And so we certainly honor you all for remembering and, and working with that heritage and being proud of it all because, because we are too, but I'm a notorious city boy, so I don't think I'm going to ride a horse, man. I'd try though. I'd give it a try. I'd give it a try with you. It's good. Thank you very much. Let's see, we have an executive session to go into.
Move to convening.
Yes, thank you. Motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to convene an exec. I would ask that Supervisor Miller know we'll call her right back from the conference room. So if you hear a voice from on high alley, you know, it's just Taylor calling you, getting ready.
Okay, thank you.
Executive session. Thank you. We'll be back in a few minutes, folks. We'll be back in a few minutes, folks.
Hello?
Hello Supervisor Miller, this is Taylor. You're connected to...
Hi Taylor.
You're in the boardroom.
Yeah, I'll just hang on here. If you could ask them to speak in the microphones when they're out there because it's really hard to hear them unless they do.
Okay, will do.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I'd like to call back to order the July 3, 2018 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. And we've just been having tons of fun in executive session. Counsel please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the item on executive session, unless there's a motion from the board, is for information only.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Valadez?
Mr. Chairman, I move on item to the executive session item that we release the opinion and waive Attorney Conflavich on that opinion.
Second.
We have a motion in second to release the county attorney's opinion. Oh, I'm sorry, what was it dated, Andy?
Mr. Chairman, it's dated June 28, 2018. It's addressed from Regina Nasson to the chair and board members, to the sheriff, and to Mr. Huckleberry.
So we all know what we're talking about, and the public does too?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valadez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're on to Board of Supervisors sitting as other boards. The Flood Control District Board, item six, riparian habitat mitigation, and item seven, contract with the United States Department of Interior. Supervisor Christie, please.
I'd like to move item six.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second to approve item six. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item seven is a contract with the United States Department of Interior.
Move the item.
U.S. Geological Survey. I have a motion in a second to approve the item. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're now sitting as the Board of Supervisors, and we're on the consent calendar. I'll go ahead and move consent in its entirety.
Sorry.
Motion in a second to approve consent. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on item nine, clerk of the board, petitions for redemption of property tax exemption waiver.
Move the item.
Sorry.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller, please.
The question I had, there was a list of nonprofits, and my understanding is strictly a timing issue on their application for the waiver, but there was also a list of individual names, and I was curious why they would get a property tax exemption waiver, because we tried to get that information, and it was, we didn't get any information from the assessor's office. Because there's a whole list of individuals, as well as the nonprofits.
Mr. Huckleberry?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, we don't have that list either, but when they're individuals, they are typically related to widow exemptions or veterans type of preference issues associated with disability.
I know that the assessor doesn't want to provide any information, but I would like to in the future at least get, you know, the rationale for why they were applying for these redemptions, or yeah, for these property tax exemption waivers, before I voted on them. So I'm going to vote no without having the information on each one of them.
Okay, very well. Any further discussion? Hearing none, any objections?
I object.
One noted for Supervisor Miller. Motion carries, Board of One.
Mr. Chairman, on item 10, unfinished business, a contract with International Snore and Desert Alliance. Well, I'm going to move the item, but I want to make some adjustments. I believe that everything that has been done in the past is both legitimate and appropriate relating to federal reporting requirements. I believe there are elements of the program, in the program income and reporting sections of the contract that could be more specific. I therefore recommend the following changes to the program income section, page five of 26, and changes to section seven of exhibit A, scope of work, page 18 of 26, and the renumbering of sections following to those to conform. And I'm passing out, I think I've asked the clerk to pass out, and I will read into the record the changes. So on page five of 26, revenue and income program, 5.1 pursuant to 24 CFR 570.202B1, policy alerts and guidance from HUD governing the use of NSP-1 funds, revenues received by the developer are not considered program income. Item 5.2, developer will segregate any revenue received from operation and management of the historic Aho Plaza Restaurant Rehabilitation in the reserve account for reinvestment activities approved by the county. 5.3, it is not anticipated that, under current HUD directives, developers' activities in the operation and management of the historic Aho Plaza Restaurant Rehabilitation will generate program income. Then moving on to page 18 of 26, section seven of exhibit A, scope of work. Seven, reports, developer will, 7.1, provide quarterly reports no later than 15 calendar days following the end of each quarterly period, March 30, June 30, September 30, and December 31, to the county for submission to HUD. The reports must include, but are not limited to, 7.1.1, project status and accomplishment narrative, and 7.1.2, number of part-time and full-time jobs created and training opportunities created. Then 7.2, at least annually, provide a statement of revenue generated by the use of the renovated facility and the applicable operating expenses included, but again, not limited to, a detail of expenses and revenues associated with the operations, maintenance, and management of the project. Developer will work with Pima County Grants Management and Innovations Finance Bureau to develop appropriate contents of this statement. And finally, 7.3, all reporting provisions will survive the termination of this agreement and will continue throughout the 10-year compliance period defined in section 3.3 of exhibit C. of Exhibit C. And it's displayed on the board now. Okay. That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in second, discussion. Objections?
I object, Mr. Chairman.
One objection noted for Supervisor Miller. Motion carries, four to one. We're on to Item 11, Development Services Final Plan Without Assurances.
Move the item.
Second. Motion in a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item 12 has been continued to the meeting of August 7, 2018. We're on to hearings and licenses and permits. We have a number of speakers that have asked to speak to the item of 13, Item 13.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to Item 13, then I'm going to move if there are no objections and no one in the audience wishes to address us, I move to close the hearings for Items 14 and 15 and approve them.
Second.
Motion in a second to close the public hearings on Items 14 and 15 and approve those items. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, we're going to do the speakers first for Item 13. Our first speaker is going to be Laura Daley. Thank you for being here Laura, appreciate your interest in this item.
You're welcome.
And you, please give us your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Laura Daley, I'm in opposition of it. I do have maps I'd like you to look at to, so you can understand what I'm doing with. Okay, my name is Laura Daley. I am in opposition of this and I have provided the maps because I have read all of the opposition forms online, so I know that you're aware of this. But the photo gives an example of just how close these two liquor stores would be. They're virtually the same parking lot. No one would know that there's a definition of two different boundaries. And the dots are self-explanatory and I do have something to read that I will be submitting to the Arizona Liquor Board also. Okay. "I am opposed to issuing this location the beer and wine license requested. Our neighborhood has 10 establishments to make such purchases already. One of these is directly behind the location of the D&amp;K Market. I feel this area is well represented in the sale of beer and wine and this new license is unnecessary for the community. I have enclosed a map of the area to better understand the amount of such establishments we have currently. I have, I'll also include a picture of the proposed site with the existing liquor store immediately behind it. This area is predominantly residential with most of the business on Valencia Road where there are six options to purchase alcohol already. If more choices are needed, there is additional five more stores three miles east on Valencia Road. I also question the posting of the notice of the application. It was placed at the front of the building on a piece of plywood protecting the glass door. This building was under renovation and each day this wood was opened to access the building. When wood was opened, the notice was not visible during daytime work hours as it was on the backside of the wood. I did not see this notice until the last week of posting, early in the morning before work began. The public had little opportunity to see and read this notice during daylight and no lights at night to see the notice. Am I mistaken to think this should have been displayed more visibly? I ask that the community's objections be taken into consideration when making the decision to issue this license." And also, right now, there is a sign up that says, "Opening soon." No, most of the residents really do not know what this establishment is going to be. They do have a banner up top where the flagging is now. It's not, it is on this picture. I didn't zoom in close. But it says, I might have it backwards, but Napal Safari Tourism and Travel. So if you happen to drive by, you're going to think, "Oh, is a travel agency moving in?" I looked them up at the Corporation Commission. That organization is the parent company of who's going to request this license. They've been formed since February of 2018, so it is a new organization. And it is being at a D&amp;K Market. But when they ask for their liquor license, what type of business license will this be for? Beer and wine store. It's not being promoted as a beer and wine store and I think that we are saturated with this type of business. And I did not include also in this that there are three bars in the area too, so there's plenty of opportunity.
I'm going to ask you to conclude your comments, you're past your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate you spending your time here with us and your comments are important to us. Our next speaker is Mariela Correa. Thank you for being here, appreciate your time, and if you'd please give us your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Mariela Correa. I live in the neighborhood of Cardinal and Drexel. And I mention that because I'm trying to oppose the liquor license being granted to a potential new beer and wine store in our neighborhood. We have a liquor store on the corner of Cardinal and Drexel already that has been there for 18 years and is owned by a wonderful man that has become a great friend to all of us in that area. The D&amp;K Market that is requesting the liquor license on Cardinal and Drexel is right in front of the 18-year-old liquor store called Pima Liquor, which I think it's too close and very unnecessary. We already have three bars and five stores to purchase liquor within 2.4 miles of our neighborhood, which is a total of eight. And I believe that another one is completely unnecessary and that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Our next speaker is going to be Irene Correa. Thank you again for being here today.
Thank you.
And you must be related because you have the same pleasant smile and everything.
Thank you. My name is Irene Correa and I oppose the new liquor license for D&amp;K Market. We have Pima Liquors, there is no, it's very clean. We have other establishments that we can purchase liquor from, as both ladies have said. My fear of D&amp;K is bringing unwanted people into our neighborhood, homeless, people asking for money in front of the liquor store. Right now, we don't have that in front of Pima Liquors. Eddie, you know, the owner keeps it very clean. We do have that problem with Circle K, AMP, Safeway, Walmart. So I feel if you bring this in, which is, I mean, I don't know how many feet from a AA building, right in front of it, it's just going to be a bad idea just to give them a liquor license altogether.
Is there a school nearby?
Yes, there, well, there's a Warren Elementary, yes. And there's a church down the street. Yeah, and a preschool in the same area. So I oppose the liquor license for them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good Fourth of July.
Appreciate it. Thank you for spending your time with us. Yeah, you too, have a good Fourth of July. Lots of sandia and I guess we're supposed to be hot dogs instead of tamales, but I think it's okay either way.
Carnesada, come on.
Carnesada, there you go.
Carnesada, yes.
There you go, Pete's in favor of that, so there you have it. There you have it, the votes are in. Alright, Miguel Rivera is our next speaker. Miguel, please come forward. Thank you for spending your time with us. Three minutes and please give us your name for the record, sir.
My name is Miguel Rivera. I'm opposed of liquor license. I'm going to touch on some subjects that were just said. There is a preschool also just in the same market, like in that little section, so it's like, it's not, for that, and then again, the AA building that's right across the street, you know, it's, you know, I'm myself as, I'm sober now of December of last year.
Congratulations.
So, thank you guys. So I know how hard it is to quit. So to have that temptation just right across the street, few feet, it's going to be difficult. On top of that, yes, the trash would be, you know, more there and I know, you know, police officers around there already have kind of, you know, trouble time with homeless and then around those areas of Circle K and that, yeah, that would bring that negativity towards our house as well, into the neighborhoods. And it just, it just wouldn't be, you know, right to have that. You know, we are, as a community, a very safe community in that area, you know, everybody knows each other, you know, we may not say hi every day, but it's like, you know. But I'm opposed to it just because of those facts, you know, and then it's not good for a growing community, just, just period. I don't think it'd be great, you know. And then just more concerns of having, you know, more trash, the glass, you know, the tanyas and everything else in the area, keep that clean. And if, you know, someone else moves in with the liquor license, it's going to advance that, you know, trash and who knows, you know, there might be homeless people, you know, so. But that's, that's what I got to say is I am opposed to it for now.
Very good.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your time. Esteban Moreno? Thank you for coming in today, Esteban, we appreciate your time. Please give us your name for the record and you have three minutes, sir.
This is Esteban Moreno. All these things said today, I gotta accept as truth. And one thing that I do want to say that I haven't mentioned yet, that the surrounding area around it hasn't been quite up kept in South River County and as well as the parking lot itself. I was a little concerned about just handling the extra income flow and people and cars on top of the wear and tear and weathering. And then with the preschool and things like that and other schools around there, I just feel like it's a safety concern as well. And then seeing here that this is the main issue of a liquor license, that just in the mix, I mean, it doesn't go well, if I gotta say that. So, that's all I wanted to say and thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Have a good Independence Day as well.
Yeah, have a good Independence Day, it's good. Crystal Horton is our last speaker. Thank you for being here, Ms. Horton, appreciate your time and if you'd give us your name for the record and three minutes, please.
Yes, my name is Crystal Horton. I have lived in Drexel Heights for nine years now. I'm a parent, I'm a grandparent. I do have concerns about the store getting their liquor license, we do not need it. We have Pima Liquors right behind it, there's other stores and bars nearby. The preschool is in the same facility where that D&amp;K Market is being put up. There also, Pister Middle School is 0.3 miles from this new market. It's going to give the opportunity for middle school kids to, after schools, to go in, not, you know, to candy and stuff like that, and not only that, to steal alcohol. There's been problems with Circle K of kids, middle school kids, high school kids, already stealing alcohol from them and it's just going to give them more of an opportunity to steal alcohol. Other than that, it's going to also cause vagrants, homeless people to come in, hang out. They already hang out at Circle K, Safeway. We've been trying to get them out of the neighborhood and it's just going to cause them to hang out there, which we don't need.
Very good.
That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate you being here. Okay, that concludes our speakers. I'm going to make a motion to close public hearing and deny Item 13.
Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing and deny Item 13, discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Andy, or Counsel, please, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are certain statutory requirements for the Board's order if the recommendation is for disapproval. And so if the Board's going to vote to disapprove it, I would be remiss if I didn't let you know about those and-
Please do then.
So the requirement is that if there's going to be a recommend, recommendation to disapprove, the Board has to issue an order within 60 days of the application. I believe the application was in, was May 14th. And that order has to have attached a summary of the testimony and evidence presented in favor or at the, at the hearing. So I think the motion should include a summary of the reasons for the disapproval and a direction that the Chair can be authorized to sign the order containing that summary statement.
Okay.
You're amending your motion to include that?
I'll amend my motion to include the reasons that were given during this discussion. Proximity to schools, proximity to parks, proximity to childcare, already having a number of liquor licenses in the area. Those are the main ones that I heard. I believe that pretty sums up, pretty much sums up what people said. Supervisor Bronson?
Well, no Supervisor Valadez.
Oh, I'm sorry Supervisor Valadez.
I think you want, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Counsel, just wanted to make very clear, this is a recommendation to the State Liquor Board and the final decision will be theirs, is that not correct?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Valadez, yes.
I wanted to make that clear because everybody showed up here, remember, this is a recommendation to the State Liquor Board and the final decision will be there, so that's where you need to go as well, okay?
And I would try and bring more people, okay? I think it's important as part of that discussion.
And if there was any written testimony, can that be included as well? I'm not sure that, I think, well Laura Daley did present some.
Right, right, and we would include the map and the photo that was presented to us as evidence, I'll hand that to you, Andy, so that you have that. Okay, are there any objections?
Mr. Chairman, I object.
Okay, one objection, motion carries, four to one, to deny. So we're on to Item 16, hearing, this is a rezoning, case number P-17-RZ-00011, Tucson Mountain Ranch.
Mr. Chairman, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to this item at this time? If not, I'm going to move to close public hearing and approve as recommended by staff and by the commission, subject to standard and special conditions.
Motion to approve rezoning, Item 16, P-17-RZ-00011, Tucson Mountain Ranch. Discussion, objections, one noted for the Chair, please. We're on to Item 17, hearing lot split, case number P-1298-096, Mountain View Ranch.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Christie.
I would ask if there's anyone here to speak to the hearing regarding this item. Seeing none, I would ask that we close the hearing and that we follow the approval of staff, subject to special condition, and approve P-1298-096, Mountain View Ranch, lots 87 through 89, as a request of Four R Property LLC, represented by Dynamic Civil Designs LLC.
Second. I have a motion in a second to close public hearing and approve Item 17, case number Discussion. Oh, I would add that that's subject to a special condition. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Chair will move item 18.
Close the hearing.
Unclose the public hearing. I'm sorry, thank you. Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item 3, County Administrator Sales Tax Advisory Committee. I'm going to go ahead and move the item, but I would certainly make special note of many thanks to the folks who served on the Sales Tax Advisory Committee. It was a long and tough discussion, and it was not necessarily successful in the end, but I certainly do appreciate their work and value citizen input to every committee that we create as part of the Board of Supervisors. So that's my motion. Motion and a second to disband the Sales Tax Advisory Committee. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item 4, Special Bond Election Resolution 2018-43.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Valdez.
I'm of approval on item number 5 and resolution number 2018-43.
Item 4.
Item 4, correct. And resolution 2018-43.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 4 and resolution 2018-43. This is calling for a special bond election for regional road construction, repair, and preservation, and it will be held here in Pima County on November 6, 2018.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
I'd just like to explain my vote. This board has not prioritized spending to make the roads the number-one priority. Golf courses, bowling alleys, the courthouse, soccer fields, they're always put to the front of the line, while the roads always are pushed aside and the money spent are used for other things. The voters said no to the courthouse. They said no to the January 8 Memorial. They said no to the soccer field, yet those are pushed up in priority, and we're spending our money on those as we speak, while the roads continue to suffer. And yet, we always go back to the voters, because the roads are such a core service of this county, and ask them for more money. We've asked them for sales tax, we've asked them for, you know, bonds. The people don't trust us anymore, and they shouldn't trust us, because we have not proven to them that we are willing to put the roads as the number-one priority. And I don't believe that people in this community will approve a bond. I'm certainly not going to recommend approval. And they should demand that this board make the roads number-one priority and start spending the money on the roads before they ever approve another dime to give to us. So with that, I'm just going to vote no on this agenda item.
Very good. I would just comment that, you know, Pima County has done a good job with this bond program, and the 2004 bonds were audited by the Attorney General's Office of the State of Arizona. Auditor General, excuse me. Thank you for that correction. Auditor General of the State of Arizona, and not a single finding, not one. What was the size of that package in 2004, Mr. Huckleberry?
About $585 million.
$585 million, and not a single finding. I think that speaks well to us about our behavior and how well we've been able to be successful in spending bonds correctly. The other thing, I think, is the public absolutely recognizes that this item and this issue has to be dealt with, and this is the best way that we have available to us at this point to make sure that our roads get repaired. Supervisor Bronson.
In regard to the audit, I think not only were there no findings, but I think the Auditor General actually commended us on how we did the bonds, and Mr. Huckleberry can probably elaborate.
Mr. Huckleberry.
Mr. Chairman, I think, as you recall, this was a special audit requested by the legislature and paid for by the legislature, and the Auditor General audited it, and not only were there no findings, the conclusion of the Auditor General is that the program is a model program that ought to be replicated throughout Arizona.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Christie.
Explaining my vote, the core reason why I will be voting for the resolution is because this issue belongs squarely in front of the voters on the ballot, and the voters will decide, and that is, is as how it should be. If the voters vote for it or against it, they will, they will and should have the final
Okay, any other comments from board members? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Supervisor Bronson. Supervisor Christie.
Yes.
Supervisor Miller.
Now.
Supervisor Valdez.
Aye.
Chairman Elias.
Aye. Motion carries four to one. We're on to item 6, Finance and Risk Management, Proposed Deonza Domestic Water Improvement Supervisor Bronson.
Yes, five, not six.
I heard you.
Okay, I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 5, Proposed Deonza Domestic Water Improvement District. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item 6, condemnation, including Resolution 2018-44.
Mr. Chairman, I move the item on resolution number 2018-44.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 6, including Resolution 2018-44, authorizing the Pima County Attorney to condemn real property interests where necessary for El Paso and Southwestern Greenway in Section 24. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 7, Attractions and Tourism, Metropolitan Tucson Convention and Visitors Bureau, DBA Visit Tucson Amendment Number 2. I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item 7. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We're on to item 8, United Way of Tucson and Southern Arizona Amendment 4.
I'll move the item.
Motion and a second to approve item 8, United Way of Tucson and Southern Arizona. This is for the Employee Combined Appeal Program. So important stuff to all of us, and especially to our employees here. Discussion, objections.
I object.
I object.
We have two objections, one for Supervisor Christie and one for Supervisor Miller, so the motion carries three to two. We're on to Community Services, Employment, and Training Items. You know, I'm going to move items 9, 10, and 11. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're items, on to item 12.
I'll move the item.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 12. Discussion.
We have no second yet.
Oh, yeah, we don't. I'll second it.
Okay.
I apologize. Motion and a second to approve item 12. Discussion, objection, hearing none, motion carries. Item 13 is Primavera Foundation Incorporated for Emergency Services Network Program. I'll move the item.
Second.
Discussion, objection, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item 14, Sun Corridor.
I'll move the item.
Second, the motion and a second to approve Sun Corridor Incorporated General Fund, contract amount $650,000. Discussion, objections.
I object.
One objection noted for Supervisor Miller. We're on to Pima County, well, motion carries four to one. Pima County Wireless Integrated Network, items 15 and 16.
I'll move those items.
Motion and a second to approve items 15 and 16. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to procurement. Item 17.
I'll move the item.
Motion and a second to approve item 17. Discussion.
I did.
I just did right now. It's the second time in two minutes, right? Sorry about that, folks. Motion and a second to approve Spillman Technology Incorporated. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item 18.
I'll move the item.
Motion and a second, or item the second again, to approve item 18, Master Agreement Number MAP-018343. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item 19. Chair will move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item 19, Poster Frost Metro Incorporated. Discussion, objections.
I object.
One objection for Supervisor Miller. We're on to item 20.
I'll move the item.
Second, motion and a second to approve item 20. Discussion, objections.
I object.
Oh, one objection for Supervisor Miller. Almost didn't get you in there, Ally, but thank you for hanging in there. I know it's hard when you're doing these phone meetings. It's very hard to keep up and hear and all of that, so I appreciate you hanging in there. Items 21.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item 21. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move item 22.
Item 22.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Item 23.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Chair will move items 24, 25, and 26.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve 24, 25, and 26 on the addendum. Discussion, hearing no objections, motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned. Hearing no objections.